All right. Good evening, everyone. It's now six o'clock. We're having our city council special call meeting. It's Monday, July the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five at six P. M. Welcome to everybody and thank you for your time and your willingness to be here with us. At this time, we will have our invocation by Councilman McManus and our pledge of allegiance. Better stand.
Bow your heads. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness to us and your glory.
Yes.
Thank you that you are God, and we have a special place in your kingdom. Lord, we just pray that you will guide us and watch over us now as we work through the city's work, and that you will give us patience and wisdom and clarity and guide all our speech and all our actions in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Now, if I pledge my allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My comments, I just want to reiterate thanking you all for being here and those who are tuning into our live stream. Also, thank all of our council for being here with us today. It means so much to be able to come together and be honored to take care of the business of the town of Pickens. I'd like to give a report on the selling or purchase of the land on Pendleton that's closed today. We signed all the papers and it's done. So now we can plan to do something with it. So if anything comes to mind, Councilman McManus?
Yes, I'd like to suggest we cut the grass, please.
Yes, sir.
First order of business.
He just turned it over to me. He told him we can cut it now. All right, first order of business. With that being said, I want to thank our staff. I thank our administrator. I thank all of you for being able to do what you do in such a good and grand way. I don't have any other announcements or anything else to share at this call meeting because we had to take care of some other business, but I want to turn it over now to the administrator for his report.
And this will be a somewhat of a good news, bad news report. I'll start with the good news because I like good news. Our Public Works and Utilities folks, we know that we're in the midst of a meter changeout, and they're out in the field changing fifty to sixty meters a day. So when you've got three thousand or four thousand to replace, you've got to do it at a pretty good clip. They've actually outstripped, they're installing them faster than they could be entered into the system, so we're trying to match that a little bit better so that the meters are actually in the billing system. They're also working on a fourteen-hundred-foot improvement to our water system over on Fox Squirrel Circle, where they've had some issues with water pressure. And the meters, I'm not sure of the history on it, but the line and the meters are at the rear of the houses, which is not ideal. So they're replacing that two-inch line, fourteen-hundred feet of it, with four-inch line, which will greatly improve their pressure in that area. They've completed over the last week or so about seventy-five hundred feet of that conversion, and it seems to be going very well. There was a gas service line that was, thankfully, it wasn't a transmission line, but a service line that was interrupted, which was quickly repaired. But that's the making an omelet rule, I guess. I don't think anybody fried in their own skin yesterday, or this weekend, but the Craven Mellon concert. There were five hundred or more people there. It was pretty hot. But apparently it was quite an enjoyable event.
I would have been there, but my blood pressure was two hundred and something over a hundred and something. And I knew that heat would probably really raise it up there, so please forgive me.
Speaking of heat, I would commend everyone, if you haven't gone by, to see the newly added sunshades and swings. We've finally got some swings for the children over at the Doodle Park, which I sit and watch on my porch. They've been very popular over the last week. So lots of lines for the swings at the park. J. C. Park, got a couple of pictures of our new addition there. As you know, we worked with the county, and they funded half of the cost of this play structure, which is not quite in service yet because they're waiting for the safety mulch to be installed and the concrete to cure and all that. But the kids will be playing on it very soon, so that is a very nice addition out there. You know, last year we did sod around that area, so always trying to improve what we offer, and I think this will be a nice addition. So let me get my agenda back up. All right, so we've got that, and then the bad news. Our commercial garbage truck, freight liner, which we're not sure what year it is exactly, but it's not our oldest, it's not our newest, went down. This is the one that serves all of the businesses. The quote for repairing the high-pressure fuel pump, which I assume with my limited knowledge of mechanics is fairly important, and the fuel lines is twelve thousand dollars for parts and labor. We have a forty-thousand-dollar budget, which we are in the first weeks of our budget for this year. But Trey tells me that that particular truck has cost somewhere around seventy thousand dollars in maintenance and repairs over the last year. So I just learned of this this afternoon and wanted to report it out to council. I don't have an immediate path forward, but I asked Trey to hold off on committing to the twelve thousand dollars, and let's see what options are available. We've got three garbage trucks. One of them is an older backup that has its own mechanical faults, but I'll report out to council what I learned. Because as I said, again, we've got the budget available to repair it, but I don't want to pull the trigger prematurely and put money into something that's going to require more. So that's what I know this evening. Sorry for the bad news on the garbage. And I do understand that council, several members enjoyed a infrastructure tour this morning. I hope that was beneficial.
Mr. Mayor, I was on that tour, and it was fairly enjoyable, except for some of the people that were accompanying us. There was one particular person who wouldn't shut up. Yeah, we just talked constantly, but I'm not going to name names. Councilman Rogers, I'm not going to name your name.
Well, I'm glad y'all had a good day, at least. Was it very informative?
It was, actually. Very helpful, very helpful.
I'd always seen all that. I'm glad that y'all had the initiative.
We saw your initials on a lot of things. Yep, we did. Graffiti is illegal. You know that, right?
That included, as I understand, the wastewater treatment plant.
We did see the wastewater treatment plant, and...
Interconnect and the distribution system.
Yes. The, if you don't mind while I've got the floor to ask a question, the commercial garbage truck, is that a front loader truck?
It is a rear loader.
It's a rear loader, but it has the hook for a larger dumpster?
Actually, I'm trying to envision the one. It's either, and Trey's not here, I don't think. It is either a front loader or a rear loader. I believe it's a rear loader.
It's a rear loader because they dumpster. They take the post office out and they dump it in the dumpster by cable.
It is by cable, and they've had a lot of trouble with the cables on it. The other day, that day, the truck failed and dropped a dumpster on its side over here by the vape shop, and that was quite an ordeal to get it picked back up again.
When you suggested that we not consider the repair, right, immediately, was there something else in your mind about what we want to consider?
Just because I heard about this at four o'clock this afternoon, it was just to dig into it more deeply, see if there is, I want a complete assessment of the truck because Trey did bring up the prior service history on it. I just want to dig deeper into it. He does have a line on somebody, which I would rather avoid, but he said, "I've got somebody who can rent us a used truck." I don't want to necessarily go there. I just want to look into it more.
What was the history as far as maintenance on that truck, let's say, two years?
I know that for the last year, it's cost north of seventy thousand dollars to replace parts and do work on. One thing that I have examined as we've tried to look at a path, especially for garbage trucks, and I want to dig a little bit deeper, is because a lot of these freight liner trucks are very substantial, they're built to last. It's some of the equipment that's attached to it causes all kinds of problems. But there are some very reputable people who will take a truck that is old and beat up, and they will basically strip it down to the chassis and build it back up for forty to fifty percent of the cost of a new truck. I don't know that that's what we pursue. I have no preconceived notions. Just before we say, "Yes, spend a quarter of the budget for maintenance," I just want to look into it more deeply and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I also enjoyed that tour from Trey. That was great. It was, I think that what I brought away from it is we need a SCADA system. Is that what you call it?
Computer system.
Yes, because I think some of our, just not all of our key installations, there are no video cameras on them, and there are no recording systems. So, I mean, we actually found water pouring out of one overflow pipe on, what was it called?
Was it a overflow?
Tater Hill.
Tater Hill.
Tater Hill.
Tater Hill, and it had been probably coming out of there for a few days. And there was no way unless he just showed up there, and he, you know, and he said he inspects, or he and his folks inspect about once a month. So water had been coming out of there, he figured, three or four days, you know what I mean? So we need a SCADA system on all of our facilities.
And that's the most true way of saying it. We do have a SCADA system. It's fairly advanced, but it's limited to certain locations. And there's a desire to move the central hub, which I agree with, out of the water treatment plant, which is no longer being used, to the wastewater plant. But yes, that is a need.
Or possibly at least camera system, maybe initially, since the SCADA, expanding the SCADA seems to be quite expensive. I think that an initial step would be just cameras.
Well, wasn't it an issue about software?
There are numerous issues, but I can go back with Trey.
But that was the main issue that, all of the hardware is in place, but we just...
For most of the systems, yeah, there's already antennas up and so on, but I think the software would have to be replaced. I think he had SCADA on the facility, Tater, Tater Mountain tank, you know what I mean? But he had a SCADA, but it wasn't working correctly. It wasn't showing the right, you know what I mean?
We can do that with him. My understanding has been that we have some facilities that are not on that network, which that would be the first step, and certainly any that are, making sure they're functioning properly.
And again, I wasn't, not blaming anybody. I'm just saying to the council where... And also, the fact is, you know, where Greenville Water comes into our city and that pump station, there is nothing there. There's no SCADA, there's no video. I mean, if someone got in there and... I hate to think what could happen, but I think, you know, we owe it to our citizens.
Now I have to go put a camera there tonight.
Yeah.
I think cameras are step one, in my opinion. And then also, just to add on to this, since we're talking about our tour today, it was fascinating to see some of the facilities that we haven't seen yet. And I think for the public and those that care here, please pay attention to what you put in your wastewater. That stuff does not disappear. And it is very scary and very eye-opening when you see it in that setting. I mean, just pay attention. The businesses need to be more, like, have posters up, and don't just read them and ignore them. Don't flush stuff. It's not just your toilets, it's your washing machines, your dishwasher, your, like, yeah. It's pretty eye-opening, so I would like to make that point to the public, and it's something that we're going to be changing things in our house.
And just because the grocery store says it's disposable?
No, it's not.
It's flushable? It's not.
It's not.
That's one of the biggest main problems that we have with wipes that are not really designed to be flushed because they don't disintegrate like toilet paper.
But it was a beautiful facility, and we're so blessed and lucky to have it.
Yeah, absolutely. Drew was telling us that, I mean, just a minor amount of fluid of the wrong kind, you know what I mean, can shock that whole system and just, and shut it down. I mean, we need to be really careful as residents of the city, you know what I mean, what we're flushing down the toilet, you know? So, yeah, I think it would be interesting to open that up for the public to go walk through there and see, you know.
It's amazing how much we depend on microbes to help process the waste.
On just light. They've got the ultraviolet lights that filter that.
Amazing.
Trey did a great job. Thank you very much for allowing him to give us a tour.
And we really appreciated the new truck with the air conditioning.
Bet you did.
It rode pretty good, and we got stuck only once, but then we flipped it into four-wheel drive, and then it was on we go.
Y'all had an adventure there.
Yeah, we did, we did. Yeah, we did. And to reiterate what councilperson Winters has mentioned, that step one, security cameras in all those facilities, would be really good. And I don't think that would be a huge expense. The SCADA would be more involved, obviously, and much more expense. But there's just, it would be, I think it would be wise to try to figure out how we could make that happen in the short term, so.
And also, that could help us, that's going to help us in the near future. So we're going to have about twelve hundred feet, is it twelve hundred feet of the pipe, the gravity fed?
It's a twelve-inch line, I think. A little bit more than twelve hundred. I think it's twenty-six hundred or something like that.
Yeah, twenty-six hundred feet of gravity-fed line to where we won't have to rely on our pump stations. That's going to be a huge thing for the city of Pickens because it will help with our water pressure. There's so many people, like E. C. The Rock, since I've been on council, and that's three terms, have been really complaining, rightfully so, about the water pressure. Sometimes it's to a trickle, but this will increase the water pressure by at least forty percent.
And do it without the use of electricity?
Okay, without electricity, this is going to really cut a savings to us as a city, that we won't have to run those pump stations. But we'll have them there just in case. We need them. We won't just trash them.
One more comment. I thought this was hilarious. Maybe the city would get a kick out of this. We went to a particular area, and Trey told us that there were three houses in a row that they had to ask each other permission when one was going to take a shower or one was going to wash clothes because the water pressure at the other two houses, you know what I mean, would go so low that it was not usable. So they stayed in, you know, in contact with each other, you know? But they were laying new lines, but I thought, wow, I have nothing to complain about at all. These people are working there. Can I flush my toilet now? Not yet, not almost, you know what I mean?
And this is only funny to us because it's currently being repaired. Otherwise, it would not be.
Yeah, yeah, it was, so they're putting the water in there now, but that was, I'm like, wow, that's... You talk about Andy Mayberry, you know what I mean, USA, and I was like, wow, that was funny.
That's awesome. Any other comments? Any other report on your reports? That it?
That's it.
Thank you so much, so much for your report.
You're very welcome.
Now we're going to have a discussion of ordinance that restricts first-floor use on Main Street. I'd like to start because I was on council when, if you see the ordinance that's in your packet, was compiled, and it was due to the fact that we had one company that was buying up all the property on Main Street and just leaving, I mean, not having any storefronts there. That was the whole motivation for this ordinance, to try to get retail in the business, Central Business District. I just wanted to bring it to council as we can discuss it and bring it to the floor if it's part of on the agenda for our regular meeting. But I just want to know what you think about your vision and your hopes and dreams for the Central Business District. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question to start with. The, I mean, one thing that I noticed right away is the parking spaces that are outlined in this ordinance are clearly not necessarily being followed or permitted. So I think that's an error that needs to be looked at because it's very highly outlined in here. I do think that, I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, a company has purchased one of the buildings on Main Street and is hoping to allow twenty-eight, is that correct, employees?
A maximum of about thirty.
Are you the purchaser? Okay, wonderful.
Were you going to give a presentation tonight?
No, I don't think there was one. I think it was just for discussion.
We're going to discuss it, then we're going to bring it forward.
So it is twenty-eight employees?
So currently, we have fifteen.
Okay.
We're currently located in downtown, we have fifteen with a number of three.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic then?
Sorry.
And as introduction, Mayor and council, this is Bruce Smith of Geograph.
All right, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, can he give us just an updated summary, you know what I mean? I was in the office, Tim's office, when they came and presented, and I think it'd be great for council just to hear a summary of, and that's why this is coming before.
So again, I am CEO of Geograph. We are a, we're a global software company that specializes in communication software. So we build and sell a GIS software. So when you're talking about SCADA systems, I'm very familiar with SCADA systems, and we have a lot of cities that use our software to manage SCADA systems, as a matter of fact. But we started our company in 2018. I was a partner at Palmetto Engineering, which is out on 153, engineering company that built this software from the ground up. And in 2018, myself and a couple of other guys bought it and bought the contracts from my previous partners and started Geograph. So we have about a hundred and eighty-five customers really across the globe, primarily in North America. And we're generating, you know, this year we'll do just north of four million dollars in revenue. So in 2021, we had an opportunity to buy a building in downtown Easely, relocated our office. We were renting in Clemson. We bought a building in Easely, relocated. It was the old Impact Realty building. It's kind of ready-made for us. We just moved in, you know, put up some glass partitioned offices and started work. We acquired the building next to us, renovated the upstairs for more offices, created some more commercial space, really improved the value of the properties. I mean, our appreciation on the properties just in three years has gone up about seven hundred thousand dollars in three years based on what we've done to the properties. But it was not conducive to office space. So we were kind of ad-hoc-ing, putting people, and we're doubling up offices. And, you know, we're looking to grow about two to three people a year over the next five to six years. So currently, total employment is twenty-one. We have four of those, five of those are remote, so they're in here periodically. We have another fifteen that are in the office. They're here locally in the Greenville, Liberty, Easely, Clemson, central area. So we have about fifteen that are current, but we're looking to add two to three more. So what attracted us to that building was it gave us enough space to grow for the next five to ten years in that location. And obviously, with the condition of the building, it was renovated, I think, early 2000s. It needs to be updated. It needs to be kind of renovated because it was for the behavioral health. So there's like large work rooms and kind of observation rooms. It's not conducive to set up strictly for our purposes. So we actually acquired the building. We had plans drawn up. We were getting ready to start construction when we actually found out about the ordinance, and we're kind of halted in our track. And so it should have been disclosed to us. It was not, but we had an opportunity to do diligence ourselves. So, you know, we're going to take it. But anyway, we were looking to start this ball rolling because if we can't relocate, we're just going to have to sell the building. There's nothing else we can do, you know, we'll have to put it back up on the market. But we'd love to have the opportunity to come because we're not selling, we're not getting rid of the building in Easely. We're just relocating our office. We're going to keep that full. We're going to keep Easely vibrant. We look to do the same thing here in Pickens. We actually made an offer on all three of the behavioral health buildings to get our business as a core tenant located here and then upfit the other ones to start bringing in retail like we did in Easely and bringing in. We brought in a coffee shop. We brought in a physical therapist that's growing. And, you know, that's really where our passion is. I grew up in Central. My grandparents had a small town, small clothing store on Main Street in downtown Central. So Smith's Department Store, Smith's Department Store. They closed it back in the mid-eighties when I was in third grade, but I just, I love small towns. I love the vibrancy of small towns. And, you know, we could go to Greenville and buy an office building out in a complex somewhere, but you just don't get the environment that you get being able to walk to lunch and being able to go get coffee in the mornings and things like that. So we really, we really take a lot of pride in creating a good work environment for our employees. And being in a community is much better than being out, you know, somewhere. And so we were, obviously, we were looking to buy commercial property, but we were also looking at an opportunity to relocate our businesses is what came about acquiring this property. So our goal, again, to get back to your original question, our current occupancy is fifteen on a daily basis, but we're looking over the next five years to take that to thirty. With our plans, we kind of max out about thirty-five in that location. But I don't see us reaching thirty-five probably in the next five or six years. But, you know, you never know when things go well and you have to hire ten people, you know? So, you know, kind of our plan, I won't say Plan B, but our alternative was to acquire the property right that's tangent to it, which is the old lawyer's office. Just if you're looking at 309, it's the one just to the right. We were looking at acquiring both of those, making that one retail initially. But if we had to expand, we could expand into that area too if we got over the thirty-seven in the singular business. But again, that's all contingent on being able to have offices in downtown. But anyway, that's good for everybody where the history is, kind of where we're at.
Thank you. So we also discussed parking because we're going to need fifteen to thirty cars, and we don't want them on Main Street, so I think there was, I think there's like ten parking spaces that come.
There are twelve on the property.
On the property, and...
Behind it.
That would probably cover most of it, but I think we discussed maybe, maybe there was a possibility of buying the car wash and maybe the city doing something together with this company for parking.
In an update on that, we did submit an L. I. to make an offer on the car wash. That hasn't been accepted yet, but we have made an offer to purchase the car wash.
Mr. Mayor, correct me. I thought I saw on the agenda for the zoning appeals board a reference to the car wash and it being someone wanting to redevelop it to small retail spaces, and they needed something, some variance at the rear. Does that ring a bell with anybody?
That variance was granted to the property owner, and I'm not sure if that property owner is the current owner of the property. I think it may have been changed hands already, but either way, my understanding is that that plan did not move forward.
Did not move forward from the property owner's standpoint or just because they couldn't get the zoning variance or whatever?
I think the zoning variance was granted, but I don't think they moved forward. Just the economics of it apparently didn't, for whatever reason.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Tim, would there be any issues that we can foresee if we change this ordinance? Would prior owners of... prior owners of buildings, especially the one in question, that would have um concerns or feel like this wasn't fair, the timing was not fair, you know, I, I know they didn't come to council and ask, you know, that, at least that I'm aware of. But I don't want this to be perceived as favoritism or, you know what I mean, it was um, that we had an ordinance in place and maybe they took a loss on building on a sale or whatever, and now, you know, we're going to change this poli- this pro- perhaps change the ordinance and now this is gonna put them in.
I am so pleased that our city attorney is present today. You'll find him just to your right.
Okay.
Well, zoning decisions, as long as they are grounded and they're not arbitrary, unreasonable, it can establish a good basis for while we're making a tax amendment to those zoning ordinance. Then those changes will stand scrutiny. And so the fact that a previous property owner couldn't do something perhaps doesn't, doesn't give them a right to creating liability for the city. Now, but if we change it and their property use within, be able to be changed according to the new ordinance, then they would benefit from that.
Right. Okay. Uh, I guess I was speaking in terms of maybe prior owners of behavioral health building and so on. I mean, it's, I, I don't. I, I, I had a conversation with someone who, who brought that to my attention, that, that there may be perhaps, you know what I mean, some disappointment, you know what I mean, that this took place is taking place, you know, before the, and, and they, you know, sold the building, you know, at a loss, thinking that those buildings were not for the purpose of which we're considering, you know what I mean?
But anyone could have come forth and asked.
Right. I, I just, I just wanted to bring it up to council, it, it, you know, and, and to the attorney, you know what I mean, as to their thoughts, you know what I mean, and I appreciate it.
Well, this ordinance was passed eleven years ago, and it's not unusual that city council revisits.
Right.
Zoning ordinance is a good idea to take a look at, if it still makes sense.
Yeah.
Not just for this particular business, but for the city as a whole.
The whole city, yeah. And I think it does too. I just wanted to run that by you.
Would there be potentially an option for a retail space at the front of these buildings just to kind of find a little bit of a way around? Could there be the potential for a small retail space and then office, offices upper and behind?
Potentially. Uh, I, obviously, sorry, I'm just getting the mic. Uh, potentially, uh, you know, that was, that was gross when we had our first discussion. And there is a small front that, that we potentially could do that. Obviously, we'd be losing three spaces, which kind of condenses our availability even, you know, a little bit more. Uh, obviously, if we only do the upstairs, it's not, it's not of value to us because we're, we're trading kind of tit for tat on, on that. We're, we're giving up. I think right now we have six, we have fifteen offices. We'd be giving that up for sixteen offices if we only did the upper.
But you're not getting rid of easily, right?
No, but we're not going to be occupying it with the business. We'll, we'll lease that space out to, to someone else. We're not gonna split the business. The business would, would relocate here. So Geograph would relocate here fully. Um, so the more we do to try to accommodate that, that just shortens our, kind of our lifespan in that building if we don't have that additional space. Right now and probably over the next five years, it could definitely be something that, that we do and could entertain.
I understand you, you, you prefer to have a professional receptionist, you know, at the entrance of your building.
That's, that's currently what we have now, yeah. Uh, uh, it's, the, the plans are set up to where the, the door would stay where it is. We're gonna open up the entranceway, put some new doors in, repaint the outside, uh, get it to update the stucco on it, repaint it, hopefully take the siding down, go back to the natural brick, put some windows in the upstairs. That was kind of our major plans. Um, but yes, there would be a, a receptionist, because I, I, I mean, you know, we're, we're globally operating, so we don't have walk-in customers. Uh, most of our business is done remote over Zoom, but we do have guests come in. We do have visitors come in. We do have things like that, that they do come in. So we do have a UPS shipments, things like that. So we did have a receptionist there. And then the um, unfortunately, the downstairs, the only windows are to the front. You know, so also giving up retail, we kind of lock our light uh up that way as well. So um, it's definitely something we could entertain, uh, if it, if it helps move the ball forward. It's um, our priority would not be to do that, but you know, it's something we can entertain for sure.
I just feel like that's a, a good compromise to entertain, even if, even if you could cut it so it's smaller. I'm just thinking out loud, but um, I think that's something that I was.
Counsel, counsel person, Winter. Could I ask a question? Mr. Mayor, is it okay?
Yes, sir.
Question? Okay. So the ordinance, as you understand it, states that first floor should be retail. Why do you think that language was added to the ordinance to require retail to the first floor?
To avoid all of our businesses on Main Street being office-only and to bring in commerce.
So you don't think it had anything to do with parking?
I'm sure, I'm sure it did, although it seems like they tried to take that into consideration with this ordinance.
Right. You're right. I think so. Uh, well, I'm just wondering if, if a business that has, it's just an office user, um, the, one of the, I guess, complaints that some have is that, you know, an office user comes in and uses street parking for office use. And that takes away from the retailers.
Right.
Okay, so one, to me, there are two issues. One is just your look of your downtown, the retail look of it, right? Um, and the other is the parking. And to me, it's almost you could, if you could separate those out to help solve the total picture, take one at a time. Um, so if we deal with, you know, what to do about parking for office users, whether they're on the second floor or the first floor, doesn't really matter, because is there, I don't, I didn't look closely, but is there a, a limit to which parking spaces office uses can have regardless of where they're located in a building? I mean, because if they're parking on the street all day, to me, that would be a problem, right?
So in the ordinance, did you, did you see the parking, one parking space?
There's a formula there, but I didn't, I didn't check to see if there was.
So that was what past council, that was what past council was recommending.
Right.
Past this ordinance. Parking space per three hundred and fifty square feet, I think.
I think, and I know, I mean, just from being here during the entire time that behavioral health was there, they had a lot of employees occupying those three buildings and a lot of transient visitors, not transient, but community members that were coming in and being there for thirty-minute sessions or hour-long sessions. I mean, they used, they had tons more parking than this gentleman's.
They were using more parking.
Absolutely.
Right.
And it wasn't enough of an issue on the street that it was brought to council regularly, correct? So I think, yeah, step one would be you need to have a plan for your parking back there and it needs to be behind the building.
And, and that's our intent. And we ran into the same thing in Easely, which Easely doesn't have parking restrictions. Uh, you can park on the street all day long. There's no time, time limit, but we, when we first moved in, we had a couple of employees, myself included, was parking on the street. Couple of, we heard, just through the rumor mill, we heard complaints about cars being there all day. We made, we told all of our employees to park as far back in the back parking lot. We haven't had any issues with that. We, and the only time we park in the street is if we have to run in and get something and run back out. Just temporary. Um, so we're very cognizant of that. And, and us being in a small city, we know that, especially in a commercial district, we know that traffic and volume is important. And we do not want to take away from that. We're, we're, we're looking to encourage that because we want our staff visiting the restaurants and the coffee shops and, and on, and in the square, but parked in the rear, you know, we, we, we know that. Um, a- and so you know, you can take that with a grain of salt. That's just me standing up here saying that, right? But that is our intent, and that's what our instructions to our employees are, is to not park on Main Street.
And you were saying that you explored the option of purchasing the building beside?
Mm-hmm.
And three eleven has the twelve parking spaces, correct?
Three oh nine has the twelve. Three eleven probably has some as well. We have, we don't have a survey on that. According to our survey, we have, uh, we have four right up against the building and another eight right behind that. And then there's the, the paper easement before the car wash. And that was why, to, to accommodate this, we have made an offer to, uh, to purchase the, the, the car wash to add more parking. Another thing of this is we only work Monday through Friday, eight to five. We're not here on the weekends. We don't work late. We're not third shift. So um, you know, when we're not there, our parking is the, for the city use. I mean, we'd love to sign a, uh, M O, M S O.
M O U.
M O U, you know, to allow the city access to our, to our deeded parking spots um during non-working hours. So again, you know, we're, we're willing to work and partner with you guys to, to do whatever, whatever we need to, um, you know.
Mr. Mayor, just to, to fully make sure that we understand the context of all this, the, the meeting that Councilman Rogers referred to. Um, uh, Bruce and his firm didn't come in saying, hey, we want to purchase the car wash. After we discussed the parking requirements, the one per uh three hundred and fifty square feet for an office use, and we said that property is available, then they, as a reaction, said if we need to secure parking, that generated the letter of interest for the car wash property. So that they would, you asked the question to me over here, they actually would own um off-street parking that would be associated under that scenario.
So we, you know, we could consider zoning part of downtown. You know, that's also an option, not open this ordinance to the whole downtowns part of the city, but thirty percent, forty, whatever we want, you know what I mean? My understanding, there was an attorney that would like, would have liked to have gone in down there and because of this ordinance was not.
Yeah, that was a while ago.
Able. And I think he bought a building, right? And it's sitting empty?
The bank building.
Right? I mean, so, I mean, we, we, that may open the door for that opportunity.
Well, I just, I think it, in my initial thought of this, it needs to be a case-by-case type of thing. And I know that that's very contrary to what past council wanted. Um, but I think it's close-minded to shut the door to everyone to say we don't want any industry or businesses. We've got a lot of buildings on our Main Street that have second floors
Yeah.
that aren't conducive to retail spaces. They haven't been fixed up so that they can be apartment buildings. I mean, they're, they're literally ready to go for office space. And we do have a major parking issue. I'm not denying that at all, and that needs to be considered. But I think that we need to be a little bit more open-minded on what we're gonna allow into these buildings that are, are there. And there, we've got businesses that are ready, willing, and able to come in.
Yeah, I think so.
I think it opens the door for partnership with industry coming in. But the reason I wanted council to really look at this and talk about it amongst yourselves is some of the things that's concerning the city and also our constituents that we need to take into consideration. Um, there's certain things that we need to do as far as bringing industry in. And we welcome that, and we do, but we want to make sure that it's conducive for Pickens, that we can really pull this off and really help one another be successful. We want to help, but we want to come as a council with some certain things. Because one thing that you have, that's a good idea, but it's not really a good idea for you as far as putting, it would help us really if you had, every place you bought, you had storefront, a little space where somebody could rent from you and, and you could take care of the back part. That would solve our problem totally. But it's so many people that are upset because they couldn't do the same thing that you were doing because of dealing with a council that wouldn't be able to work with them. We want to work, but we want to make sure it's done for the best of Pickens.
Understood.
Yeah. And uh, that's not, no slight on, on your business at all. I really want to help. But as council, we come together, we're talking to you now. And I was hoping that they, they would open up and tell, you know, what they would expect on down in the central business district. See, this is not just Main Street. This is the central business district. How do you all, how do you want to bring your legacy as far as, um, what do you want there?
Is it, Mayor, excuse me, I ask a question. Is it, are we talking about the central business district as a whole or the overlay district? Because I was under the impression, okay, well, that changes my opinion. Uh, because I was under the impression we were talking about the overlay.
Yeah, we gotta look at the whole, as the part.
The whole of what?
Central business.
The C B D.
Just the central business district.
Not just the overlay?
Now, don't, don't think I'm talking negative about this new industry. All I'm saying is, we need to come together collectively focused on that's what we want to do so we can help your citizens do whatever we need to do to make this successful. I'm not talking against a business coming in there. Um, I was hoping he would help me. So we wouldn't have to do any ordinances and change that, but okay, look here, just use your imagination. Have this business where you're lo- gonna be located. You say twenty-five employees?
Fif- currently fifteen. Currently fifteen or growth to twenty-twenty-five in the next couple of years.
Okay, currently fifteen. They gotta eat. They gotta get, uh, gas. They get certain things that can help our economy. So I just wanted us to talk so that we can come to the table and really have a plan together to help all of the parties be successful. That's what I'm asking. What's best for people? What do you think?
Well, I'm just thinking, one solution is we could just change his address to another street, to the one behind it, and then he wouldn't be on Main Street anymore.
Oh, you'd be on Griffin, right?
Are you done being a smartass?
I'm just, I'm just, this is brainstorming time.
I asked the same thing. I was thinking, can we just consider, because there's a back door, can we consider that our address?
And I, I guess to my point about how many buildings we have that are two-story that could potentially be used as office space, one thing that comes to my mind is, I would be, and you're asking for a vision, I would be a little bit disappointed if the top of Brock's was turned into a hundred office spaces. One, our infrastructure can't support that. And two, it would just change that building for me entirely on Main Street. I don't think that we're at a level of a city where we, we need infrastructure or we need industry coming in. That's what we've lost in the last twenty years. And so we do need that, and we need to be open to that. But we also need to think about, do we want every building on Main Street turning into twenty-five, thirty offices?
One, you know, one thing is, is in, in my mind, is that it makes some sense to say that properties that are located within a certain radius of the courthouse, for instance, might be suitable for a compromised situation where they, they could be allowed to have office on the first floor um because of the, the need for attorneys or other services that might be a benefit to needing to be near the courthouse. Now, I'm not saying that's a great idea. I'm just throwing it out there that you know, there, there could be some way of saying, well, we just, we'll allow it on this one section of street. Um, because of its proximity to a, a, basically another office building, which is what the courthouse is. It's an office building.
Which we basically have, right, on Court Street?
We have that on Court Street. We're, you know, we're, you know, talking about trying to make it work on that. So I mean, it's not, it's not unfounded. It's just, it's a migration. But you have a bit, you have an office building on Main Street now. It's called the courthouse.
We do. And we have several others that still.
Right. Now, the, whether you, I mean, you could run the risk of so many office spaces on Main Street that it doesn't look like a Main Street anymore. You create that, and I get that.
Our predecessors were trying to avoid because it was starting to look like that.
But I don't disagree with Councilman Rogers that we, we couldn't say, well, we, we're willing to go up to a certain percentage of our properties that will allow first floor office space. I don't think that's. that will allow first-floor office space. I don't think that's unreasonable. It's, it's, it gets complicated because anyone buying property has to say, oh, well, are you, have you met the ma- you know, have you met the, the percentage yet? So that, that could be an issue, but if we're talking about just simply the central business district itself. And, um, then, then to me, that's, uh, and, and really, the, the ordinance identifies streets that are not necessarily, you know, there, there's the central business, these streets are within the district, but they're not the only streets within the district. So, um, it's already trying to, it's trying to create something. But when we talk about trying to, um, create the activity in our downtown, I don't, sometimes I wonder if you kinda need some steps. That you take some steps you don't really want to, but it helps bring that energy into town, and then things can kinda swing a different direction over time. It requires a council to be very involved in that process for a period of years to have some consistency with that. They have to have, hey, we're gonna allow this now, but we may come back and visit it later and say, okay, now we wanna go do this because we've got the mass, we've got the people in town, we've got this large number of office users that are asking for restaurants or shopping or whatever. And so then you can begin to, okay, how can we make that happen? So it's, there's gotta be a balance, and I think, you know, there's no city in America that doesn't allow office space on the first floor.
You bring in his office space in, and you have these employees, which could, in bring, in turn, bring in retail in restaurants. But hey, we have all these people that we can have cafe or lunch, lunch counter, that we need to feed them lunch. 'Cause now they're spending their money here, so you need to help bring people to the town for the business to have a reason to come.
Right, well, it, it's feasible that within his building, he could have a little corner at the front door that, that's subli- you know, subleased or leased to Be Well Coffee, and they just have a little place there. 'Cause that way they don't have to walk all the way over, right, to Be Well. 'Cause it's kinda, it's a, it's a little, you know, you have to cross some busy streets there, I'm just saying, you know, that would.
In our discussion, I think it was brought up that they, they might be interested in having a cafe in, in the, in the front section of their building for, for their own employees and perhaps the public. So it might be a design, you know, of opportunity for them to open up a little cafe there, you know, that has coffee and donuts or whatever. And I'm not sure what they would like, but I, that, something like that was brought up and was, then we discussed that. And, and maybe make it part of the design, and that would be a architectural, it might be cute kind of a thing. You know, it's still an entrance into your, there wouldn't be just a wall there. You could actually open up a cafe for your employees. Maybe a place for them to sit down and the public to come in and sit down and get to know you guys and sell your, you know, a little bit of your product there. And, and, uh, and then our, our ordinance would work, you know what I mean? And I think we could, we, we would have both, the best of both worlds. Uh, that was discussed. I mean, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, again, we're open to that, uh, and, and I think if that's, if that's the only path forward, we're definitely out, open to it. Uh, as I said earlier, you know, we, we lose a couple offices by doing that, but it's not detrimental. It's not like losing a whole floor. Um, so we're definitely open and, open to that. You know, our, our biggest concern, our, our biggest concern, again, is same concern you guys have, is where is the traffic to get tenants in there? You know, 'cause we, we've got to, if we're gonna own the building, we've gotta lease that building, we gotta get it leased out. And, you know, if there's no traffic in downtown, which you're trying to encourage, and we're trying to aid by that by bringing people into the town, then we can attract tenants for things like that. A- and so, you know, it's kinda this, you know, which hand do you, which hand do you go with first, right? And, uh, so it's definitely something, I mean, you know, I think we looked and, and.
You know, we're talking, we're, we're talking roughly, uh, you know, this, this area right here is the, is the street corner. So we'd be losing these two offices and that's the same floor, sorry. It's identical. So it's, it's, it's these two offices and a receptionist, but yes, we could wall this off and, and make it, you know, like a coffee shop, or if we could get a coffee shop. We have a coffee shop in Easely, and they do tremendous business there. I'd love to get them to open a second location, but, um, that would be great. Then we could bring a tenant along with us. But yes, we could be open to opening this up to, to retail, which would be the storefront. The only problem is, is that's, it's all our light for the first floor. Um, so, you know, it kinda creates a, a dark, kinda closed-off office environment without opening this up.
You know, my thoughts were you don't close it up.
Yeah, don't close it.
Yeah, yeah, it would just be an open, but it would be beautiful, but people come in and it would, I think, I think. Like going into a large hotel in New York City, you know what I mean? There's, they're not closed. You have businesses everywhere in there, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Might be, I don't know, might be a, a unique idea.
Shop internet cafe kinda deal, so.
Yeah.
And let me just back up and say, I'm not opposed to Coyote Coffee using that spot either.
Very diplomatic.
That's nice.
I'm curious to hear our attorney's perspective on the option of making ordinance a kind of a case-by-case thing. Is that doable legally, or would we be opening ourselves up to more? I mean, I feel like it should be doable legally.
Yeah, I would, would probably, uh, get call, uh, counsel to not, err on side of caution, not do a case-by-case evaluation of this. I would like to make just some general observations about, number one, this is, ordinance has been in place for about eleven years. And if you have an office space on Main Street currently, if I had a law office on Main Street, and I decided to close up shop and I sell my building to another law office, that use has not changed, they're grandfathered in. So I'm wondering, what's the real risk here? And it, and, and, and how much of a problem is this? And was this legislation drafted eleven years ago in an attempt to deal with just one purchaser of property? And sometimes when that happens, it creates bad law with unintended consequences. And, and, and so I would, I would, I think council needs to carefully evaluate the, the purpose of this particular zoning ordinance and whether or not it still meets the city's purpose. And, and going forward, what, what changes make sense in order to accomplish your goal, not to have a Main Street that's filled with office spaces, but also brings in commerce? But again, keep in mind my first point, a lot of those office spaces may never change because they're grandfathered in. And so that use that change, they're still have the right to stay there. So I, I would ask, I think council needs to take all that into consideration when evaluating. But we need, a- a- to your initial question, you need to have a, a, it needs to be a straightforward manner of evaluating the zoning request. A lot of this doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And you even have a sign regulation thrown in at the end, which I'm sure conflicts with our existing sign ordinance. Just seem, it seemed like the legislation was meant, was trying to address a number of issues, including parking, and it maybe didn't solve many issues at all. And I, and I find it very surprising that no one seems to have, I mean, not that we didn't ask, but no one had requested a variance under any of these parking space requirements under the last eleven years. So I'm wondering the real efficacy of the ordinance, start with, and whether or not it actually served its purpose.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the city attorney a follow-up question? Because there's something said that, um, from planning staff and the administrator's standpoint, just so that we have some guidance. You just said that you believe that the sale of an office to a new office, just clarify that for me, was grandfathered. And I'm just wondering why we're having this discussion, if that's the case. Because Jennifer Visage, I mean, her interpretation was that after a property transfer, there wouldn't be grandfathering. But can you opine on that specifically?
If they're not changing the use of the property, they should have the right to continue using that property as the office space.
When you say changing the use, do you mean changing the type of business?
Right.
Okay, so if it was another behavioral health that was purchasing this building, then they would have the continuation of the grandfathering.
I believe so, that's correct.
If it was another attorney buying an attorney's office.
Thank you.
But if it's changing the type of commerce that's being in there, it, then it does not grandfather.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? How would you like to proceed further as we go into this? Do we want to revisit our ordinance as a whole?
Yeah, I think we need to.
I think we need to.
We're gonna do our job with that, and then could I get volunteers, so I'm gonna have to appoint, I need three people that's gonna work with Tim and come up with a plan for this ordinance to make a recommendation for that, to count. Also, go by the city attorney once you get, just tell them what you need in it.
Why can't we do what I, I asked in May? Um, I went to all council and yourself and always take a copy of it, mark up and see where we're at, what we think it needs to be changed, and bring that together as a whole and make.
But it, it, he says no, far legitimacy about the whole thing. I think a new ordinance needs to come forward from council.
I think having everyone's opinion also makes it a little bit trickier. If we try to think of, like, the committee structure, then it's a little bit easier to present a new ordinance.
Which way is it easier?
I think the three people, instead of having everyone submit, in my opinion.
'Cause see, if you do that, all you're doing is bringing back a recommendation.
Yeah.
To council, and, um, it'll help.
And then all council members can dig into it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I also think that you're just creating another step also. So I'll just let you know that.
So, well, am I, am I missing something?
What's the step you're talking about?
Well, I mean, you, we're gonna have to go back to committee, then we're gonna have to go back to the council again. So you're creating another step that we're gonna have to do.
But it's more structured that way. It's not.
And now, the, the, the committee thing is such, it's, it's so effective to be able to have checks and balances.
I think we tried the committee thing already once.
It was successful, but the only thing people wanted to do was not meet.
No, I'm talking about during my time. 'Cause we formed some committees, and I was on a committee with the water.
Yeah, but see, that was, that wasn't.
And that didn't work. I promise you, it did not work. So, uh, I'm, I'm not very, I'm not, I'm not willing to listen, but I like to hear more about it myself. I mean, I like committee as a whole myself.
Yes. Say, what if, I don't, what if we task our, this visage to, I mean, typically, wouldn't the, the staff develop, come with the, the ideas to make changes and present the changes to committee the whole? And then rather than, I don't, rather than a, council members get involved in that first?
I'm fine with that.
I mean, I don't, is that, I don't know if that's.
Clear, fine, sorry.
Well, I don't know, having the staff.
Yeah.
Come up with the proposed amendments, and then you roundtable it in committee.
Yeah, that would be fine too.
Because I think you're gonna need to probably look at the central overlay district, the center over, as a whole. Because there may be some inconsistencies between this and what's there. And I think, you know, it needs to be a very, just a comprehensive look at what we have. Making sure that we're making this change, that the overlay district is what council wants.
And how can we do that and allow this gentleman to, I mean, they, they, they're ready to go. And I, 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 I see that this is gonna take six months, you know what I mean, knowing this council and, and the way this moves, you know, so. And they, they'd like to have, be moved in by the, by December, have everything, they're ready to start building. You know, so I, I would sorta like to do something, you know what I mean, to allow, not to lose their business.
So wait, do we need a variance on it, to allow them to?
But the, the use is not allowed. That's the problem. It's some, it's not your typical variance request where it's asking for one more parking space or, or a height, building, height building or setback, or it's, it's, it says no, it says no office on first floor. That's, that's the issue. That's, so I don't know what discretion the, the B C A has on to get a random variance at all, 'cause the use is not allowed. That makes sense.
Right, so how do we remove that?
It's easy. You simply say that, you just remove that. Just say, instead of it saying office must be located on second floor, you say office can be located on any floor.
Or just delete the whole thing?
I mean, you may still have to have a parking, the, the, to me, it's a parking issue. I, I don't care which floor it's on. I just don't want you clogging up all the parking on Main Street. 'Cause when I go into Brock's and look for shoes or something, I don't wanna have to drive way down because there's somebody, you know, there's a twenty, fifteen, twenty employees that are parked on that side of the street who are, you know, who are just there for the day, and, you know, I've gotta, you know.
Well, that goes back to the two-hour parking.
So. I agree, we need to have a comprehensive look at all the ordinances. We don't know what else is in there, you know, and so.
But that's gonna take longer than six months.
Yeah, and that's the problem, you know, and so I would like to do something, and I don't, do, what would you suggest we do, you know, to? I, I mean, should we have an attorney look at this, or?
You have my permission to smack him.
So my question is, uh, what's the reg- what's the regular process that you would do?
Well, go through planning commission.
And we can't say that we're in a hurry. We've, we gotta do what our process is.
Okay, well, well, what's being asked is, what's the quickest way to get this done?
Right.
It's still gonna be a process. You gotta go to planning commission, gotta have two readings and an ordinance.
And that's all we need to do. We need, we need to do what the process is.
But, you know, does, does that involve, is this, uh, addressing this one particular text amendment, striking one sentence? Or does council wanna address more than that?
I, I feel like if we're gonna change it.
So we can strike overall?
We might as well just, just change it for everything and everybody if we're gonna change it. I mean, I don't wanna change it just for one specific person or, or, or business.
You wanna be consistent in what you're gonna be doing on downtown. That's what I was talking about, having a vision of what you're gonna do. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to take forever. I think we can move in a logically organized way and come up with an answer. You got some good people.
Mr. Mayor.
I think it would be good for it to, uh, go to planning commission or, or start with staff revisiting what this.
Now that we're going.
I think it's gonna be more than one sentence. But this ordinance needs to be looked at and needs to go to planning commission, uh, redlines, changes presented, and then come to us and need to roundtable it and say, we're good with this, we're good with that. And it's still an across-the-board thing. I do understand, my case-by-case basis was kind of the same thing as saying, in the future, this might not be what we want for this, but currently that is. Um, but I get it that it needs to be cohesive throughout. So that's my vote. My, not my vote.
Now, Tim's been real quiet. You staff, what do you think, staff?
Well, I think that our direction is clear-ish, um, to, um, basically present options to council, uh, look at some comparative analysis of what others are doing and bring that back to council. I think we would continue to keep a dialogue with, uh, Geotech, did I say that right? GeoGraph, I keep adding a tech instead of a graph. Um, understanding that we need to follow the process and work closely with the city attorney and with Jennifer, our, our planner, and try to work through these issues and bring back what we can.
Can you bring back something next meeting?
Can.
How's that, guys?
I don't understand, bring something back next week?
What you just got through explaining about what he was gonna do.
Okay.
Uh, as far as taking care of, um, options and what we can do. Uh, as far as taking care of, um, options and what we can do to move forward quicker.
So, I, I guess from that perspective, yeah, I, I, if that's what council wants to do, and maybe that's the only way forward, I'm not sure, but that you still own the building and that you could go ahead with, you know, your, the internal work, except leaving the front portion perhaps. You know what I mean, to, for the final.
Yeah, that was, that was gonna be a, a request as a, you know, while, while you're determining the use of the building, if we could get a permit to at least start demolition, you know, so we could go in there and because that's not going to change the use of the building, if it does, if you guys can't come to a, 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 an agreement and it has to stay retail, someone's gonna have to demol- demolish it anyway, so it probably gives us a leg up to at least start the demolition. You know, to kind of get it prepped for use, uh, one way or the other.
Mister Mayor, if I could, as part of this discovery process, ask the city attorney an additional question. Um, by your reading, just as we start on this would it be a variance if Mister Smith agreed to put aside retail frontage? Um, so that the frontage, because I believe the ordinance says no first floor office, which is difficult to do because most businesses have offices and technically all of them would be in violation. But it, would it be a potential variance for this particular instance while we work on the larger ordinance? To say they're willing to make the frontage retail if they can have a variance where they split some percentage? Does that help with the use question?
I think that would be a, a doable variance.
Okay. So that's one potential option.
Potential option for the company.
That way they can move forward while, while we're changing the rest of it or, or where we end up with the, the whole, that's the whole, that's the whole, right?
Mister Mayor, that will be our goal as staff and, and we'll work with the attorney. Um, we can bring back kind of a comprehensive analysis of what other communities are doing and a look at this particular ordinance. And also, um, study further what, uh, is within bounds for processes and procedure for potential variance that might make this specific case doable under the existing ordinance. That way we can do it on a, kind of a two-track basis.
Then we could have your presentation, sir.
Sure.
That'd be part of it also, so you can have all the information we need to make an informed decision, okay?
Sounds good.
And we could, we could vote, if, whatever y'all wanna do, just make however, just let it go.
Say, say that again?
As far as, um, well, as long as we get it through planning commission, then we could go ahead and get a read.
Right.
But however you wanna do it as a council, okay?
Thank you for investing in our town.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, yes, that's it?
Can, Mister Mayor, just
Yes, sir.
Can we just summarize exactly what we just agreed to?
Alright.
Cause we went back and forth several times on, are we gonna, we're gonna have staff create a proposed ordinance that will be reviewed by the planning commission which will then decide if changes or whatever, and then that will come to us to be digested and changed if necessary.
And also GeoGraph will be coming with their presentation.
Which is independent of changing the zoning ordinance, right?
Additionally, the city attorney, uh, Jennifer Vis- Visage and I will examine the propriety of, of variance if GeoGraph were willing to commit, uh, to making some retail frontage instead of a wholesale, uh, variance for use, which is not proper. But said variance of a mix on the first floor could be an appropriate variance. So two tracks, we'll bring the whole ordinance back that we can work on over the next six to nine months. We'll also try to bring something that addresses this specific instance to see if there are any other options.
Okay, thank you.
See, we do wanna work with you. Yes, sir, making that effort, thank you council so much. Number six, discussion of reestablishing council committees. I was thinking that it was, um, a good idea to start getting this done to help with our checks and balances a little bit more as far as the police and fire, recreation, public works and finance would be the three places that council would have a more intimate dealing with each department with the administrator. I wanted to bring it before council to see if that's doable, if you would like to, I'll go back, that's already been stated by Council Rivers, he doesn't want to, he wants to keep it as a council, all council of whole. What do you think as, as far as other council members?
Mister Mayor, if I have a couple of questions, so does our ordinances provide for standing committees now? So we, so our ordinance says we should have committees.
That's correct.
We're just not, we're not abiding by the ordinance, is that what I understand? Well, I'm just asking questions, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, does, is there an outline of what those committees are, like is there finance? Is there one for each department, how does that work?
Police and fire, recreation, public works and finance.
And that's what the ordinance says now?
Police and fire, recreation, public works and finance. So there's nothing regarding a non-department like this PBD or, nothing like that?
No.
Okay.
Hmm, so I'm a little confused.
So there's four proposed.
So if it's already in the ordinance, like Councilman McManus just said.
I did not say that.
Understand that, what you just said?
I said, I asked a question, if it were the standing committees.
So if it's in the ordinance, then, it's in the ordinance, so why, why are you discussing it in there, I mean, it's there, right?
Because they went away.
Okay, so I mean, so, but he just said that we were, we should have been doing it, so I guess we need to start doing it, if it's already in ordinance.
Well, see, I couldn't just not bring it to council.
Okay, I understand, well, I see, I mean.
And you'd say that, I mean, I had to bring it to everybody, you want me to just say, okay, we have a committee and you own this one, you own this one?
No, no, I understand that, but I had no idea that was already in ordinance, I had no idea, I mean, so and I, and if that's the process, that's what I wanna do.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, I, I think it'd be, from what, what I've seen and the way that businesses conducted it, it, I think it would very much help to have council members, you know, who, who can address specific issues and bring it back to council. Also, down in, in our last meeting with the MASC, you know, we were instructed that um, that, that, the council member can actually have executive sessions, you know what I mean, to discuss, you know what I mean, but perhaps, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be a forum anyway, so we would need to, we could, in other words, we could discuss issues and bring back to council. But, um, I can't, I can't remember why they said it would be important to have an executive session, but they said you could. But nonetheless, I think it would be helpful, you know, for us, uh, to delegate, to delegate responsibility to ha, yeah, to have committees. Delegate responsibilities i- in the council where not all trying to do everything, you know, because it gets a little overwhelming. I, I would rather know, okay, now I'm responsible for maybe two committees and that's what I'm gonna do, you know, and then I would expect other council members, you know, to keep themselves, um, up to date and, and be able to dialogue with me, you know what I mean? About what's going on in other areas that I'm not staying, you know, I, I mean, sometimes I spend, you know, like the rest of you, you know thirty hours on an issue, you know what I mean, and I, I think it'd be good to, you know, if I, I was on a committee and I can say, okay, this is what I've come up with and you're gonna trust that I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it thoroughly and you don't have to, you don't have to worry about it, cause it's, that committee's taking care of that.
And you can get some more sleep.
Yeah, there you go. Anyway, I think, I think it would be helpful, I mean, as, but I, but I think council has to, we have to think, talk about, I mean council has to, to work with committees, work within committees, you know what I mean, just so that when the committees come forward, we don't wanna argue about their findings, you know what I mean, I, I, I mean, we oughta trust the, you know, the committee's findings, this is
And I think the, the majority of governmental groups like ours, municipality, college, wherever you want it, national there are committees and there's a purpose for those committees, it's to, yeah, it's to streamline the order of business that's going in, and I think, I'm a supporter of that, I think that it's going to be beneficial for staff. I think it's going to be beneficial for all of us.
Yeah, I think so.
To have these committees.
I, I, you know, the
And it doesn't mean that if you want to ask more information about police and you're on the recreation committee, that you can't do that, that's not what that means.
Yeah. I mean, the federal level, state level, you know, there's committees
There's committees everywhere.
You know what I mean, and, and they, the more experienced council members, you know, on the committees that demand more time and knowledge. And the less, you know, newly elected ones would be able to come in on a committee level that would not require so much time and, and knowledge and experience. And, you know, I think it would be helpful, you know what I mean, for, just like the federal and state government is doing.
Mister Mayor, um, just from the administrative standpoint, this would be exceptionally helpful. And one thing that concerns me, um, about the city's code, essentially the chartering document states that this is how we are to conduct our business, these are our procedures. And our attorney is here and he can speak to the fact that very often the problems you run into is when somebody questions, they pick up your code and say, did you follow this procedure? And you say, no, we don't do it that way, well, why is it written here?
That's exactly.
So that, that's, that's where I think we're open to either we need to change the committee structure that called for in the code, or we need to follow. Your thoughts?
Yeah, it's the, it's the ordinance to say we're supposed to do standing committees and either we need to change it or we need to follow it. Uh, and I would just, just say anecdotally, I have another client who does do standing committees. And it is, it is very effective. It's not that the, the folks that are not on that particular committee lose their voice or don't have a say, or don't have as much of a say, but it does do a great job of vetting out uh, the issues that come before the, the body as a whole. And allow the, uh, I think better, more complete information to go to the body of council before they make a decision. That's just been my personal experience.
It can be more efficient, yes.
That's, that's the idea, at least.
I have another question, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
So, eh, four committees and we've got five elected officials here, how does that work? Do we just have one designated, like that doesn't really make it a committee or?
You could have, you could have two or three.
So you get rid of our multiple?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how, uh, when I was on council and we did committees, that's how we performed, now see, I did both of them. I've been with committees as a whole and also standing committees. I found out I was more engaged. I was more able to understand my department more when I was in the standing committee. Um, coming here as a group sometimes, it's almost like going to church. You hear a sermon, but you really don't hear it, you know?
Yeah.
And but when you're in a committee, you're able to be concentrated with tunnel vision, to come back with some good information and also help assist staff. Um, I think Tim has been a very integral part in doing a lot for the city. Um, I just think that we need to step up as a council and be more involved. Uh, I think it would help everybody all the way around, especially with finances, with Mandy and Dana. They take care of all of the stuff, but I think it's a good committee looking at a running budget can keep us away from running in a ditch as far as run, spending too much money or not staying within budget. There's so many things that can be done with standing committees, um, it gives you more not power, but it gives you more influence with staff, it's a good thing. Eh, eh, that's my experience, I've been on both.
Yeah, not power.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I would recommend that, I don't, I didn't see where we have like a structure for this, so two council members that on a standing committee and they meet.
But I think you would need three on each committee. Because the committees is, the design typically is to make recommendations to forward a matter to the full body of council, so you need a tiebreaker.
Okay.
And so you're gonna sit on multiple standing committees and you have a chairperson. And who's gonna, eh, like say finance, that person is the chairperson and then, and then they would be the chairperson for finance and they would also sit on another committee, not a chairperson, so you'd be up you typically, I, I've seen where the mayor besides appoints, who's on the committees, who sits on, uh as, as names the chair, chairperson.
Okay, yeah. And then what about meeting schedules, is that, I mean, that could be if you're serving on two committees plus you've got two council meetings.
Would they all meet, the, the committee, the whole meeting is when they all committees meet, one by one. So first meeting, the second committee, that's, that's how I'm
Yeah, and that'd be our regular meeting. Right.
Your committee though.
Whole meeting? We have a difference, separate meeting, so we have three instead of?
No, you'd have two, you, you, your standing committees are, I mean, are really gonna take the place of your committee, the whole meeting. Because they're making the recommendation to send the matter to full council consideration.
Okay.
We should have a work session.
Correct, your work session, I think I'm calling it different.
That's okay, but then do we also, like, we wouldn't need to be meeting as well together prior to that meeting? I guess, so there's not a, or we're just talking, I don't know.
Well, what I'm accustomed to is your, what you call your work session. And I'm not saying this the way it's gotta be, I'm just saying that what I'm accustomed to is your work session would serve as your standing committee meetings. And you would call, and you would schedule whichever ones have matters of business, so you know, for example, finance may not have anything before it, so they wouldn't meet. But then you would have, let's say, your public works or your police, they might have something on their agenda, they would meet those three standing committee members and they would decide whether or not to forward the matters on the uh, that the matters, or those own matters of full council consideration.
Mister Mayor, that, under that, does, that does not preclude additional meetings of the committee to work on study and step up.
No, no, not at all, I'm just saying, I mean, you don't, I'm not trying to add, we're not, only the goal is to add more meetings to.
That's right.
Right.
That makes sense, thank you.
Would this be proper, um, for committees to, like, I, I've seen, um I've seen the ca- council, we have two employees, staff members that report to us. And I, I have read through the ordinances and, and there's no clear direction as to who they report to. They just report to council and yet sometimes they need to report to somebody, you know what I mean, about about, we need time off, we need, we need this, that or the other. Could a committee take over for council and the committee could elect one of the three to maybe the reporte? Reportee, you know what I mean, for, uh, um, you know, for, for six months or whatever, where, you know, we could have the administrator or the finance director or, um, or our court, we could court, um of clerk of court to report, you know what I mean, to the, to the committee? To where, and then the, the committee then could come back to full council and say, well, this happened, this, and we could just give a report as to what we did. You know what I mean, and because they needed this, or they need that, or they asked for this, and we were able to make decisions, because it's sort of, I, I, I see that this is one area that, it, it just goes right over the head of council. We don't know really what's happening with our staff, you know what I mean, because I don't, and I think they're confused, they don't know who to report to. Who do they report to, I mean, it's not clear in the ordinances, you know what I mean, so they just report to council, you know?
In my experience on council, times I was on council. The administrator and those that had to report to council reported to the mayor. And the mayor reported to council. In other words, like if Mandy wanted a week off, she'd report to me, we'd do a form. Then I would tell, call council individually and let you know what's going on there, Mandy has, has the, has vacation days or sick days or whatever it may be, and then council would give me the okay, uh, to move that. will give me the okay to move that. But usually, especially the administrator, the mayor, Mayor Owens, was the direct supervisor of administrator.
But that's a strong mayor, you know, I.
No, that's not a strong mayor.
Like, it's not an ordinance.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it's, it's not a strong mayor, it's still answering to council. You don't, you don't make decisions or do things without the approval of council.
And I wouldn't have a problem if that's what council wants to do, you know what I mean? But it seems like those are going right over our head and we don't know. And I, I don't think that, that our staff knows who exactly to report to, because it's not in the ordinances, you know, and they just report to council and they're our staff, you know what I mean? And it doesn't specifically say, it's just, we're a council forum of government and they are, we, we hired them and they work for us. So it's not clear, you know what I mean? So that's why, to me, there's confusion and I don't, just because we've always done it that way doesn't mean that's a good way, you know what I mean? I think we either create an ordinance stating that it's the mayor, or it's a committee? Or what would you suggest? Because I, I think.
And I'm saying from experience, it's not just an idea in my mind or anybody else's. I was on it when the mayor was over.
Yeah.
I mean, not over, but the direct supervisor, and it worked very well, he kept us informed, he would call, he had, had his office here and we would come in and talk to him. I think that's one of the things that we have a problem with more than just ordinances, we don't communicate like we can, or like we should.
But there's gotta be clarity in the ordinances for us all to understand, you know? We, we have to have clarity as to where we're going as a council, is it the mayor, is it a committee? What, what are we gonna do, you know, about some of these procedural matters, you know what I mean? And I, that's why I'm bringing it up, because I think this is one point of where a committee or the mayor, if council wants, it's fine with me, but it seems to me when I look back at the history, Mr. Mayor, at the last council, that did not work well, you know what I mean? The, the mayor was not managing, I mean, we went through how many directors and there was just an absolute chaos show, you know what I mean? And I didn't see that that worked well, and I think.
It wasn't just the mayor, it was council too. I mean, it was.
Right.
A friction between council and the mayor where none of them worked effectively together.
Right.
Um, I was on that council.
Right.
Um, I, I know it was, a lot of times that mayor wasn't even present because he didn't feel as if he could work, or wasn't, nobody working with him. That was the problem with that. It wasn't, it not, he didn't have the ability to do it, it was just a majority of the council was totally against him.
So if there is clarity in an ordinance, is my point, if there was clarity where council, we created ordinance and that, you know, we would have clarity, and then everyone would have clarity about who does what. You know, I mean, I.
Your thoughts on that? I gotta know your thoughts. I've been reading this.
Well, I, I would say that the, our ordinances typically, when we have a, a strong council forum of government, it spells out, particularly with the city administrator, it spells out that these are his roles and responsibilities.
Right, we have that, we have that.
I don't, I don't remember it being very detailed.
Well, yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
It's very detailed.
Okay.
But it doesn't say who we report to, it's just council.
Well, you report to council.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so that, that's my point, I mean, we have it detailed, the finance director, it's not detailed what her, what her job description is, and I went through with, with both of them this last week, you know what I mean, and I, I think we need more clarity on the finance director's job description in the ordinance, but I'm talking about who they report to, I mean, let's start there, you know what I mean? Who?
Well, I mean, if the administrator is, for example, number one, directing and supervising administrative activities and operations, pointing department heads after consultation with the city council, he is, he, that would be, under that framework, they would be reporting to him.
No, no, I, I think you're misunderstanding, who does the administrator himself report?
Council.
Right, and there is a problem, because how do you report to six or seven members of council? When you need a day off or you need a, you need a, you need a question about policy and procedure? How, how does he report to council? And that's what I was asking, would a committee work? The mayor said, well, it's the mayor, I said, well, if it's the mayor, then we need to have a.
No, I was telling you, that's what my experience there was the mayor.
No, I, I understand it, and I don't have a problem with it, I just wanna know how it should work. Who, the administrator, the clerk, and the finance director need to have a direct report? They need to have someone, they can pick up the phone and call and say, I'm gonna be out, or I need a vacation day, or I whatever, you know what I mean? And somebody on council who then informs the rest of council, maybe at the next meeting or whatever, that they know who to report to, otherwise it's just seven council members.
Yeah. Can, may I make a motion before we dig into this any further? Because I think there's a lot to discuss here, can we just take a quick five-minute recess?
Can I get a second?
Yes.
All right. Every second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Every second.
Second.
Probably moving second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Now we're back into the business at hand, reestablishing committees. We just found out, our clerk brought it here, that it's not in our ordinances. Matter of fact, it was already changed for the committee as a whole. So I'm willing to stay with that unless y'all want to change it.
So it's already in the ordinances?
Yeah, it was changed in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, to not have standing committees?
Right, just committee as a whole.
So we either create an ordinance, in other words, to.
Change it back.
Change it back, or we just, we just stay the way we're.
Well, it's, I, I would like to know how staff feels about that. Would staff prefer to have council members that are actively, you know what I'm saying? I would like to hear how.
I think we heard from Tim, he said it would be good and beneficial. May I summarize, Mayor?
Now that you know.
Summarize?
Yeah, just to repeat, I think it would be invaluable to have standing committees, and Cameron in the hallway brought up an issue with a, kind of an ad hoc committee that he was disappointed in, and I understand that. But having divided responsibilities where council members really dig into an issue and work on understanding it, instead of sending sixty-five pages of background to everybody and, if I may be frank, hoping that everybody read it and understood it, and then trying to follow up with now seven people, it's a difficult task. And I think that being able to work on distinct portions of our operation repetitively with the same small group so that they're really in the know about the fuel lines on the garbage truck and what potential solutions are there, so we can work on a recommendation. Because, you know, to also be quite frank, a lot of times I find myself holding the bag going, I have to present a solution, and I'm not sure where everybody's gonna stand, but I think if I had some direct input on all of these things, it would be very helpful. I, I won't speak for Mandy, but she's nodding her head, I think that we end up trying to serve, we serve at the pleasure and the will of council, and we really wanna do that. But we spend so much time trying to figure out what that is, and I'll give you a news update, you're not all of one mind, so that makes it difficult as well. So I, I think it would be helpful and productive, I think it would channel some of the energy into the most efficient and productive, and I, I think that Daniel's had some experience with councils that work that way, and I think he's spoken to the same kind of efficiency being introduced to the process.
I would suggest, I would like to see a structure for it so that we don't have, because I also was on a kind of ad hoc committee, and I felt like it, it was great, but it wasn't, there wasn't anything that I was really doing or following up on, other than just reporting back after meetings. So, excuse me, I think it would be great to have a, kind of a structure for us to look at and then vote on this at our next regular meeting, whether we want to go back to standing committees or not, but this is what those would look like, this is how many people would be on them, and this is how you would meet, or whatever.
Communicate.
Yeah, communicate.
Mr. Mayor, two more sentences and I'll shut up, I promise.
Yes.
I promise. Part of the, part of the difference between an ad hoc committee, which is ad hoc, you know, if you look back at the, the roots of those words, a standing committee has responsibility and authority, because they do meet publicly, and they, as a smaller body, vote either in concurrence with council or with the staff that they've worked with, or they compromise and find a different thing, but they make a definitive recommendation to council, much less your, much like your planning commission and, and other bodies. And then the council can take that recommendation and approve it, modify it, or throw it out. But it's not an ad hoc study committee where, hey, we'll just kick it around and, and see what we can figure out. You have the weight of, you have to bring back a recommendation to the council as a whole. And now I'll shut up.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, let me just ask a question, so in those committees, you are required to keep minutes? Is that correct?
Yes.
And those minutes have to be submitted to the clerk, correct? Who takes the minutes?
You can record, you can record them, just give them to them.
Well, I don't know anything about AI. I, I, I know that A is the first letter and I is the second.
We just heard at MASC, if you would go to some of those, that there's whole municipalities that are using AI to take their, their minutes.
Well, why don't we ask AI to write us an ordinance?
Anyway.
For the committees, and then we can have a committee to discuss whether AI wrote the.
You're supposed to keep the industry, the committee, this type of committee.
If you would attend, just one of those, it'd be nice.
If you would just wake up, it'd be helpful.
All right, thank you so much. Anybody else have any more discussion?
Now, I, yeah, I, I really do want to finish, you know, and I really think it's very quick, I mean, we have the attorney here and I want to address this, I mean, I, I really, we have five staff members, it, it's just no big deal, I mean, I, I don't understand what's, what's so hard about this. We, we, they needed somebody to report to, I mean, it's just common sense, I mean, just to let someone know. I'm not saying that we're going to manage, micromanage them, that's not my point. It's just that council as a whole manages, for instance, let's just make it, nobody in this room, I mean, our, our judge, no one even knows how to give her a review. I mean, and no one's responsible for the review, you know, and I went over there, you know, she doesn't, no one goes over there, no, she doesn't even, she really doesn't know who she reports to or how she gets raises or nothing, she just does her job and does it well. And if she didn't, we would have a problem, but she is, she's very responsible and she's doing her job. But who does she call when she needs to be out? Who does she say, I need someone to help me, I can't be there, I have my husband, whatever it is, you know what I mean? So we have staff, but our attorney, you know, we don't need him, so we have four left as a council that they need someone to at least notify, you know, and it can't be, oh, I gotta call seven council members, you know what I mean? So this person is just at least taking information, and, and our attorney's told me, he thought maybe that everybody reports to the administrator, except the administrator, then who does the administrator report to, that would be the last, would, it could be the mayor, it could be a fine, a, a team, you know what I mean? Like I said, you know, that's why I brought this up during this discussion.
So you want council just to appoint that, the committee or the mayor, or is that what?
Right, so I think that, so if we want.
Could I interject for just a second?
Yeah, yeah.
We can't do business if, if it's not on the agenda. We didn't have that on the agenda for tonight. Now, wait a minute, let me finish.
About a committee.
All we, all we need to now is have a motion that we amend the agenda if you want to put this on the agenda for, for making action with it.
Mayor, we, we would be able to amend it because it's not an emergency.
Okay. All right.
So.
Am I wrong?
So.
That it wasn't on the agenda?
No, you're not wrong about that, it's not, it's not, I think this is, I, I do think this is outside the scope of reestablishing council committees, so.
That's why I brought it up, because we're talking about committees, and this is where major committees would work. You know what I mean, committees could actually take over those management roles of our four staff members, you know what I mean, that they could at least have somebody to report to.
I, I think this is a more of an internal policy and procedure issue that can be addressed.
Okay.
But, but not tonight.
I've been here two years, you know, most of it, you know, we can't get to this, you know what I mean? I don't know why, we just, we just gotta deal with it.
Can we just put it on the main agenda for the first one on?
Yes, sir, I have no problem with it.
And, and our attorney may not be here, so I thought this would be a good time for you to answer the questions for us.
So to, yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Just, um, so to get back to the established committee, exactly, I'm kinda lost, where are we with that? So we're gonna have to amend it or what?
We're gonna have to have an ordinance.
Oh, we're gonna have to change the ordinance?
Yep.
Okay, and to do that, you have to have what?
First and second.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I think Ms. Winters is asking for, for the next committee, the whole meeting, to, an overview of how standing committees would work for council, those four.
And I'm willing to listen to that, for sure, I mean, like I said, I had a kind of a, the, the only time I've had experience with committees was, it wasn't very protective, so, I mean, that's not blaming nobody for nothing or anything, it just wasn't, so, so I'm a little bit apprehensive with them, but this would be a little bit more structured, so I would, definitely would be willing to listen.
Okay. Sounds good, yeah, I'm interested in committees also, so I'd like to hear about structure, that'd be great. Okay.
All right, if, all lessons discussed now, I'd like to have a motion to convene in the executive session. Section thirty dash four dash seventy A one for the purpose of discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body. I'd like to have a motion. On said.
I make a motion, we enter into said executive session.
It's been properly moved in second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, as you know, thank you. Okay, now do it.
Are you, you ready?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we convene into public session.
I second.
It's been properly moved to second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, at this time, there's no decision has been made and no vote has been taken about our executive session. Now I entertain any comments from council? No comments? All right, and then I have a motion that we adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn for the night.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much, and thank you.
Thank you, Count.